Congratulations to the five. Oh, we're up to full strength. We'll try to stay on course tonight. So I have the roll call, please.
President.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Here.
Secretary Thomas.
Here.
Secretary Gaten.
Here.
Secretary Zimmerman.
Present.
And Vice President.
Here.
Great. And then Lloyd, if I could ask you to read these conservation ethic goals first and five.
To foster a constructive ethic among any citizen. Have a civil basis for interest in nature. To develop a greater awareness of our role and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's landscape. Well, five is to assure sufficient. To assure sufficient integration of each district functions, which is. Planning land facilities management and natural resource management to maximize the overall effectiveness of the district.
Right. Sean, would you? Lordship pledge, please.
Pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in Henry County. Our quality of life in Henry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully developed cities and towns and strong economy. Beautiful outdoors places to explore, discover, and recreate. We will empower you to conserve our water, wildlife, and way of life here in Henry County by actively seeking your input and support.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate everyone's flexibility. The agenda has been a little bit of a moving target as things have come up in the past week. But if there are no specific questions or issues, do we vote to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Secretary Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Gaten.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
President.
Yes. Good. So now, special recognition and presentation, Andrew Diallick, front and center. Guys, who's gonna lead us in happy birthday?
Well, happy birthday to. Happy birthday to.
All right. Any other recognitions or presentations that we should make? Okay, trustee reports. Seems like I've been busy, but I'm trying to think of something to report on. I'm sure it's the meeting involved, so I'll have something to say. Do any of the trustees want to bring up any issues?
Green Race, the best month was high loss, which was almost as interesting as the dragon flies. The dragon fly one's gonna be hard to beat. It was really interesting and well attended. Again, almost every seat was filled in the house. That's good.
It's great. It's great. I don't see John, so there will be no. The ball is in my court, president's report. Well, we've had many discussions. Between the cow and the day about some of the things that. We discussed at the cow and that we are going to be approving and the consent agenda and then. Discussing further when it comes to other issues. So. I don't think there's an off season for the country conservation district, it seems like. Yeah, new issue, you know, things drop in out of the air and you have all the seasonal. Issues that have to be dealt with. So as far as I can tell, the staff is up to speed and. If they normally are juggling six or eight, I think at the moment they're juggling ten or twelve, but they seem to be doing a good job. Elizabeth, is there a place in the schedule where you're going to bring the rest of the board up to date on the Goose Lake issue that? Was discussed last week and then has evolved further? I could ask Chris to comment or Ed. Just the conversations that have transpired and.
So we did have, I guess we're in open session. And what I can just say at this point is there was a meeting and I will send out a written report to the board of trustees and council.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I'm still trying to figure out the agenda, what's appropriate in open session. All right, any public comments out there? Either in the room or. Out in the physical units. I think we're back. Well, seventeen point oh is we're gonna. Okay, now comes twelve point oh, the consent agenda. So I'm gonna ask.
I move to Septica's consent agenda. Has dated. Twelve point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings, twelve point one A, March sixteenth, twenty twenty three, regular session, executive session. Twelve point one B, April twentieth, twenty twenty three, the whole. Twelve point one C, April twenty third, twenty twenty three, regular meeting, twelve point two, acceptance of the president's report. Twelve point two A, acceptance of the treasurer's report for April thirtieth, twenty twenty three, as consented. Twelve point three, resolution number twenty three dash thirty eight, awarding a contract to American Union Community Painting of Asher. Illinois, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the painting tends to link up the interior of the lost family visitor center. For a cost not to exceed eighty four thousand dollars. Twelve point four, authorization to compare specifications and let bids from the bridge of one. Add it to seven fifty five I utility tractor. Twelve point five, resolution number twenty three dash twenty nine, ratifying the executive director's execution of change order number one. In the amount of four thousand five hundred and fifty one dollars and ninety percent. With Manavol Construction Company of Inglewood, Illinois, to adjust the project design spoke to address the unsuitable soils. And existing field conditions found during a ferry trail link renovation improvement project. Twelve point six, resolution number twenty three dash forty, ratifying. The executive director's execution of change order number one in the amount of four thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. With A Jules Construction of Sea of Woodston, Illinois, to improve trail improvements. North of Ringwood Road and upgrade detachable lining plates from composite material. To cast iron to better understand the impact of the heavy equipment necessary for road maintenance and winter trail use. Found during the ferry trail north stormwater improvement project. Twelve point seven, resolution number twenty three dash forty one. Authorizing the executive director to execute a first amendment, the conservation grazing lease at PLV. Dash six, partial with Luther Bison of Newman, Illinois. Twelve point eight, offer a section to begin the negotiation process using the current rate as an established rent for a listed expiring farm lease agreement. Doesn't violate the LV one oh eight seven eight at one hundred and twenty three point five plus or minus acres. And authorize the preparation of specifications and let bids if the farm lease is not successfully negotiated. Twelve point nine, resolution number twenty three dash forty two, requesting technical assistance. From the trust for public land and the major contingency of conservation financing, I'm sorry. Twelve point ten.
Linda, I'm just gonna ask you to catch your breath because I had a question for Andy that I forgot to ask.
Okay.
When I looked at the packet and the bill and data from the county collector and treasurer for the property taxes. There's a true versus false category. That relates to farm parcels and pin numbers. What, what does that? What does true and false mean in that context?
Let's turn off our access database.
I can answer that. So the yes means this farmland, the no means this not. It's just part of the database that we have when we printed the spreadsheet off to go as documentation for the resolution, it happened to show that.
But I'm assuming that all our leases on farmland.
They're taxed.
For taxing. Right, I mean, we only pay taxes on land that is leased and therefore agricultural land.
Terribly, not necessarily. Sometimes there may be an area for holding that we are paying property taxes. Taking to establish that we have ownership, maybe in areas along trails that takes a while. I mean, there's various reasons. There may be a life estate on these property. I mean, there's just a variety of different things that.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm being educated. I thought all of the taxes because of land produced income. Well, I just is going forward. Would be interesting, I think, to the board to learn more about. Is it two percent of our tax bill is due to non-agricultural, non-income producing? Land or property, or is it fifty percent? So. You can, doesn't have to affect how we deal with this resolution. But I think it's a point of education that can be further expanded on.
On the same report, and just saw a note on revenue from the state and it was record levels. You had a note in there that it's like the most ever since nineteen seventy nine when it was first established.
That's the, I think, the state personal property replacement time. Yeah.
That was great. I mean.
It is, but we didn't go through anything this time, but in two thousand seventeen. Receipts were way off and again, it was two hundred fifty thousand, not six hundred plus thousand. But that was much higher than the previous year of one hundred eighty. Everybody was very excited and then eighteen months later, the state said, we overpaid you. Now you have to book a liability and we're gonna collect it all. And they did that for a year, then they watched with liability and, you know. So I wish I had a better handle on it. I don't have a lot of confidence and it's gonna stay there, but see. We did increase it twenty four thousand five hundred to the line back.
That was a nice gift that opened the comeback provider.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for this little deviation off course and Linda, I'll ask you.
Sure, twelve point ten, resolution number twenty three dash forty three, authorized. Oh my gosh, you shouldn't have given me a break. Oh my gosh. Authorizing the payment to the McHenry County Collector and McHenry County Driver. For the twenty twenty two first installment of property taxes in the amount, in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand seven hundred and thirty three dollars and four cents. Twelve point eleven, resolution number twenty three dash forty six, for me. That is by sending out committee on local government efficiency for the McHenry County Conservation District as required by. Five O I L C S seventy dash one.
Let's start with.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. A second to this.
Second.
Second from Ray and.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Yes.
Secretary Gaten.
Yes.
Senator Thomas.
Yes.
Okay, that will take us through the.
Hey, was, is there any? Where do you have any bills that you want to hold first of all? Hey, thirteen point one B. Consideration to approve the payment of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report. The month ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Vice President.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Gaten.
Yes.
Yes, okay. We had a. Very informative initial discussion of the. Carbon program. And so thirteen point two is a resolution. And I'm gonna read it. Twenty three dash forty four, consideration of a resolution in support of McHenry County Council. Foundation foundations application for a tree preservation carbon program project. With carbon city forest credits on portions of Tampa Codex as part of the Chicago Regional Trees Initiative. Any further discussion amongst the board after our. Discussions last Thursday?
Just recapping, this, this allows us to meet the deadline to apply, doesn't obligate us for anything. We have a month to study it and then we can make decisions after we analyze.
Yes, that's correct and I appreciate you focusing my attention on that. Well, can we have a second? Lloyd's gonna second and. If we know further questions, then that's fallible.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Secretary Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Gaten.
Yes.
Yes. Well, Elizabeth, if you'll take us through your report, please.
Okay, just a few items here. Last week during the review of the whole, we talked about the annual meeting schedule for the year. And there were two dates on the calendar where we had created a weak buffer without, didn't really identify why that was the case. So we had approved that in June, that the regular meeting would be on June twenty seventh versus the twentieth. So now that we have trustee Gaten and trustee Thomas there, is that still a course? We did, the only thing that we can come back and came to mind is the special districts forum is being held on their banquet in a worst dinner at the Lake County Forest Preserve. This is on the twentieth, which is that Tuesday night. That would be the only piece. So we only have two staff members that are attending that. No trustees have signed up to go. So we can either put it to the twentieth or the twenty seventh, whichever the board is most comfortable with. I can't do the twenty seventh. So I think is everybody good to move it? The twentieth would be our regularly normal pattern of meeting.
Your anniversary.
That's okay. You don't need to bring cake or maybe a romantic glass of, a flower and a glass of wine. But no, so the twentieth is fine. So we can do that. We will go ahead and adjust that and we'll do that.
Send a reminder.
They'll send a reminder. And then the other date was the November date. We had given a buffer too and I know it's around the Thanksgiving holiday, but we scheduled the regular meeting for the twenty eighth. Instead of the twenty first. And was there anyone going out of town? I know a lot of new trustee. So we could either hold off and have that discussion once the appointee is in place or make that adjustment now.
I remember having the discussion, but I don't know why. It's an all weird thing. I'm free that day, so I don't know. Actually, there's nothing I might.
Want to move it to the twenty first, which would be our old pattern?
Yeah.
Well, we people don't forget what they did at the cow.
Yeah. Too long this time. Two days later. We mix it different.
So that's great. So we'll go ahead and make those adjustments. I think we'll send out a reminder and update that. And then the other item that we provided everybody, just again, a reminder, just take a look at it. We gave you the budget timeline that will begin that process. We finish it, we start again. Thank you to Andy for pulling that together and, you know, we started the work in July right away. So we'll be in front of the board in August. There are some things to present to you for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. But you'll have this in front to adapt next month.
Along those lines, do you have any idea when the consultant on salaries is gonna be presenting their? Recommendations or findings to the board?
I think we're looking at July or August, somewhere in there.
Or it might be in time for those initial budget discussions.
Yeah, and let's see, the other thing, we sent out invitations for one of the pieces that was on our strategic plan. Plan was continued outreach to build connections with the county board. So you received an invite for a picket under Perry. It is to be a social event, but we will postpone the meeting as a, an official gathering of the county board, us and the foundation board. It is for individuals, not spouses, so we can use the time to connect with the elected officials. And we're working on that. We will accommodate special diets as such. And I'll talk a little bit more. I'll send an email out to everybody, but for this, our sixteen, it's a Friday from five to seven.
June sixteenth. I might have T-bone, please.
He wants a bison.
So that is what I have in the whole, but again, appreciate all the trustees. We had another mic, pipe with Mike on Saturday and those are our regular once a month. I'm sorry that we missed it. I know good intention. It was bright and early. And but the next one to Glacial Park and I'll send out another reminder and hopefully you can join us. But staff has been doing a great job in helping to facilitate conversations. This one, we had a lot of representatives from the community there. We encourage any trustee or other elected officials to bring them along for the hike. Special thanks to education, marketing, promoting. Again, it's a great way to learn a lot what goes on behind the scenes.
So that's really wonderful. We've saved a place for you in the agenda if you would like to.
Lovely to be here.
Perfect.
I do not have a county board update though.
Glad you're here.
Except that they are excited to see bison.
Are they gonna show?
Oh, they'll show.
Wonder if they were even there.
It's like the county fair, the getting the kids to get their cattle ready sometimes have to.
That's a optimistic fisherman. Look, the size of the net he's carrying.
Keep an eye on him. Okay, any public comments at this point in the evening? Well, I think we're gonna recess now and do we need a motion for that? Do we need a motion?
Second.
Okay, I have trustee Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Secretary Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Yes. Do I have to change hats or can I go? We got welcoming Tom Palmer from Huntley and Ali Livingston from Richmond. Who have volunteered to assist us and we're really very appreciative of you taking your time and making the effort. And. I think any interaction. With new members can stimulate the trustees. And so don't hesitate to stimulate us. Sometimes we need.
We can.
You need stimulation. But I think we're all new to this and we're looking to. Elizabeth. To sort of keep us between the white lines because this is an assignment that we've received from. Those later authorities. And so we wanna do the job, do it thoroughly, but I don't think we want to. Spend time unnecessarily. We wanna be productive and efficient. So those are my remarks. Any other trustees or Lisa, Tom, have anything they would like to add? Members, perhaps give us our marching order.
I don't think they're marching orders. Good, okay. All right, well, thank you. And what we're gonna go through tonight is just some first steps here. And the board, but also I did share information. So glad to have two residents of the community be with us. And making inductions, always looking to sit out of Richmond and then Tom Palmer from Huntley. And I believe with their experience and knowledge, they will challenge us and ensure that as we become familiar, I believe as trustees as well. There's things that I think each of you learned about the district as you serve the organization. And the purpose here really is in essence to do an assessment of how we're working with others and to capture all of that. And ultimately prepare a report that will be then presented to the board. And we have eighteen months to take, move this task forward. We had to create ourselves, so we've done step one, check. Because we've done that by June tenth and we're having our first meeting tonight, so that's required. So we've done some critical first steps and we're well on our way. It's our hope, I think, to try to have this done within a twelve month period so that we don't take the full amount of time to do that. I think we can be efficient with the local efficiency and do that task. We're gonna do start two appointments, which is required because for our meetings, we have to establish a forum. And a forum not just is the board now to represent that, but also puts myself as the executive director and our two residents. So that's what establishes our forum. So we're looking to how many people to add on to this process. And we kept it so we don't have issues with forum when we're meeting. But it's meant to be a very transparent process, so these are done in a public forum, obviously under the meetings act. Individuals can be present and then there's a process at the end of each meeting. For those participants that are in the audience that wish to and give us our email. I will send out a survey and a question there following the meeting to ensure that I've captured other ideas that are open to us. As required as part of the statute. So it's a very iterative, but participation that, you know, this is why you have to be here at the table. To add your comments and to those in the room that are participating. And if you're online and you're here this evening, I would just ask at the end, I'll have a slide up that has my email. And that you send me your email and that way I can follow up with the survey for you so that you have that and we'll be able to. So initially, and this is up for the committee, we said about eighteen. My thought on timeline is once we identify our scoping of what we're gonna go look and research and put together for the committee. We schedule a second meeting in the fall and then another meeting to wrap up into the winter, spring of next year. So that's, we can set those meetings tonight or we can set them at a future date, whatever the group prefers. So tonight I identify really the four tasks that I want us to work with, review statutory duty would be done. Which is required for all units of government that are special districts to go through this task. And so that's why we're a tax entity and we're undergoing that process. We need to look at the study areas and identify areas that we want to look for and to pull together. And then task, I will task and direction come back. And, and then task, I will task the direction come back to me with the staff will pull that information. We may wanna have assignments, um, of this group that wants to work on specific tasks that we can do, not as a forum, as a group that would need to meet forum, but there may be areas that we can work up with two individuals to say, hey, you wanna work with on this particular review, and we'll help capture that all together. Um, so we can do it in a variety of ways, and then schedule that next meeting date, uh, CV. Any questions so far? So the study areas, and I did have this in the board summary, um, since this is new and they're not really a rules of the road, so to speak, and you implement the statute, really it's open to what we want it to be. Um, the Illinois Association of Park Districts, which I included in your packet, who is the association who we partner up with, has given some guidance and some suggestions as we've worked on a variety of legislation, the things that we may wanna consider as we pull this together. And so it's kind of a, a, a starting place as a, as a guideline. So, um, what I've identified here, uh, what we review duties of the committee, including the not limited to a review of the governing statutes, our ordinances, rules, procedures, powers, and jurisdiction of the district. So that's, that's one area. So we understand how to what our scope and, and there's what we're to do and, and what we have in place. Second piece would be to identify efforts and provide examples whereby the district has promoted transparency, accountability, or efficiency compared to other governments. So we can look at areas that the business has done that, and are there areas, um, that we can, you know, evaluate and, and do better, or, or, or fact? Um, and then review efforts of shared services and partnerships that align with the district's mission and delivering the best possible services at the least possible cost to the community. And so I think as we go through our review, we'll find many examples where the district has worked with other units of local government, where we look for profits uh, to do the work of the district. Um, so that would be one area. And then to provide examples of efficient operations, you know, through use of volunteers, maybe joint purchasing, collaboration, alternative revenue, et cetera, and then look at what all those things would be. And then, at the end, identify recommendations, if there's any for increased accountability or areas that we have. So that was a very large, broad stroke with many, and some of them probably connect with one another. Um, and so, other thoughts that the board or the committee has that you believe is not captured here, um, that we should also be looking at?
I think you've covered it, personally.
So if those are the study areas, um, I would like to suggest then we identify assignments, and I could do, one of the thoughts that I had was to maybe start to create a worksheet, um, that I can send out to the group that would have each of these areas, and then as a staff, begin to populate uh, that, and then, uh, send that out um, to the committee to review and, um, and get some feedback on that. Again, not to share as a whole, but to work back and forth with myself as a staff member, and, uh, and that way we don't have any issues. And then we find another time to come back together once we have that put together.
And this is going to be done every, how many years?
Ten.
Every ten, so none of us will perhaps, well, many of us will not be here in ten years. So it isn't the type of thing that you could say, well, we're gonna do these two points, and then we'll come back in two years and do these two points, and then, you know, in that fashion. But I think targeting and, um, and digging into those target, targeted areas, um, might be more meaningful than just hanging with a real broad brush and trying to cover everything. So, I think you're right, it's important to set priorities. And then, and here you'll guide us through that.
You're trying to do it in twelve months.
Right, what can be accomplished in twelve months?
So if I, I can pull that together from tonight that launches, and then if there's a particular area of interest, as I send that out and if the committee wants to, to lean more in or help, and, and, you know, I would welcome that. Over review to, as we divide up our work teams internally, because as assignments go, we'll have to probably we'll send out to different teams of the organization to pull that together, and I'll be looking at our executive team as well, as they work in the departments, because everything, there's a lot when we begin to look at the scope of services that we do. Um, and I'll refer to, we did go, and I think I had mentioned this, for the county, um, they went through and they were actually, CMAP had a presentation where the Kennedy County took lead on local government efficiencies and cooperation, and we participated in that process. Actually, I, I did serve with Pete Austin and others of the village managers and city managers across the county where we were looking for efficiencies, and so a lot of that has been mapped, so we'll be able to pull from that. And then in addition, um, the district many years ago did an exercise called Mission Possible, and we were looking at ways to, again, look at new all revenue sources, and look at ways to reduce costs, and look at ways to be efficient, and so we have that data. So it just, again, you have areas to pull from, which I think will be helpful. And I'm hopeful that in your area of expertise, there may be some other things that you know to say, what about this? Have you thought about that? So.
Well, I, I'm gonna make the point that sometimes people come to the district requesting support for this project or that project. And the projects may be worthwhile. And they have a certain, uh, amount of public support. But they might, but we may not be the best organization uh, to sort of become the foster parent of this project. So this may be a process, um, you know, by which we can try to define, um, where our focus is. So that, um, as you talk to other government agencies, they understand, okay, the conservation district doesn't do this, or they don't do that, but we will do this. So that, um, it just helps in, um, understanding what, you know, if there are areas of potential cooperation, yes, let's lean into it. But if there are areas where we've decided we really don't have expertise, or we're not interested in expanding our authority, well, we make it a turn. And that's mine.
Absolutely, and I think that's, the governing statutes are, are statutory uh, enabling legislation of what our purposes and set back to that, and, uh, that would be one of the first things to make sure we all look at, and, and then use that, maybe what you're suggesting is one of the benchmarks as we go through, through a lens that we look.
Right, because sometimes we find ourselves discussing whether it's preservation of historical buildings, or repairing, if it's just that bridge, or in other words, people are people have, uh, legitimate interests, uh, and they're trying to, um, get the conservation district, and it's taxing authority involved in uh, seeing those projects through. And yet I think we have to be careful, um, not overextending our our purview.
I'd like to address that, because that's an excellent opportunity for the district to, as long as we are connected with the other government agencies and really know intimately what their missions are. That is a way of us looking like we're really on the public side, because the public will come with a problem, but then we can solve. And even though we personally aren't going to be a responsible organization, just the fact that we're going to be interconnected and able to make that fabric covering the county is, is gonna be so appealing to the public.
And, you know, Tom is here, our liaison with the county government. We interface with various other governmental units, township, village, this or that. And, uh, I, I think you're right, sometimes an individual member of the public doesn't know who to call. And, but at least if we try to direct them, uh, perhaps we're not the one to help you, but this individual will pick up the ball.
You know, one thing too, like, you know, and I don't know if this is of interest, but in your study areas, um, where in that, not so much to touch a, a move off of your mission statement or anything like that, but um, maybe your goals for the next ten years, you know, or you know, do you wanna expand on, you know, the bike trails and your connecting, or um, do you have other areas where you wanna expand? I know you're working with the, um, you know, the arborists, you know, the trees and the plants and such, and, and you know, maybe something that, that'll set, you know, your, your, your goals for the next two or three or four, six, seven years down from, from here. One bill's gone and Chris is gone. And, and, and I, I have no idea if that's even something that you might wanna do in, in another, um, you know, in, in a government or a different um, part, you know, you know, kind of like a strategic plan, you know? Things are definitely totally different, but also, you know, where, where you see yourself in terms.
Awesome, awesome. You're reading, you must be reading that kind of our strategic plan, and we developed, which the board will see next month, the tactics. And one of those does have a ten-year plan, um, that tracks exactly to do that. It's a comprehensive plan that takes into consideration not only preservation, areas of public access improvements, to programs, you know, to ensure that we're moving on these. Right on. Excellent.
All right, so what was, where are we?
So any other comments? I guess I just wanna make sure that everybody will, in the meaning that that, and anything else that seems, and then maybe we need to find a date that we can meet. And to give us enough time, so into the fall, um.
What's September?
We want to do it as part of, um, and I guess that's the preference. September, we do, our regular meeting is the eleventh. We wanna find a special call meeting for this, so we have time, which would probably be appropriate versus trying to do that on, on another meeting. Go to find a separate meeting.
I, I probably shouldn't express my certain opinion, because I'm not gonna be involved. I know some of the folks are very busy with harvesting in the fall. And, uh, so take that into consideration. You've got the other, uh, subcommittee meetings related to, um, the trust for public lands and working that direction. So we, again, it's calendar.
Yeah, I don't mind having it.
As far as the same, you mean, and just do?
Yeah, I, I just personally, it's, you know, I carved this whole line out for the meeting. I don't, you know, I don't have anything else planned but this. Whether it goes to eight, nine, or ten, I, I'm committed to doing that, but sometimes adding another meeting to the month is a little more difficult.
So for September, that would be the nineteenth. So we're gonna do, so the board, we usually are, we're discussing our levy process, and in that process, that would be the community, the whole. Usually by the time we get to our regular meeting like tonight, we'll go pretty smoothly through that. So we would have time to build that in, and then we'll just embed that, if that's the board's preference, and to do that on the nineteenth.
That date, yes.
Just for clarification, so I can visualize that the committee is, uh, residents here, yourself as the administrator, and then the entire.
Correct.
Okay. I thought it was just a few men.
Yes, the whole board.
Unfortunately.
Very good.
Unfortunately, it's.
Well, that sounds very good, Elizabeth. I think silence is definitely that people are on board with that, uh, idea of combining it with the
Yeah.
September business meeting. The board.
Then we'll embed it, just like we did this, so it's very clear. We'll adjourn to the committee meeting. And then we'll have that be working, but I have a plan. Uh, we'll have everything like we would normally do to present out to everybody in advance, so we've been looking at it. Of course, it's not gonna be radio silence between now and, uh, September. I will read everybody the prize, the status, and put it in, and then I'll get that out. Um, but we'll definitely see how we're doing.
You said the nineteen?
Is it the nineteen? Yes, that's.
The twenty-first.
One, two, three. You're correct. I'm sorry, I'm counting here on September. I've got it both wrong. You're correct. So it's the twenty-sixth, twenty-first is in half, and the twenty-sixth is the meeting. Thank you for the question.
Is it time?
Uh, five o'clock, and it's night.
Yeah, similar.
So will we be meeting on our assignments in smaller groups, you clean now and then? So as I break out and we begin to do another course of study, I guess we'll identify, I think there's a particular area of interest, and we'll break that into smaller groups. Or we could do, you know, two people, uh, and with a staff member or myself to pull that stuff and review it, and then bring that forward. So I want to be respectful of everybody's time. There will be some time where we'll go back to, you know, and pull stuff out and pull it together, send it out for review. Um, but as far as meeting time, I think each area, we'll see where we're at. But as far as meetings, we'll be September. And then we'll see if we need another follow-up. And hopefully be able to write the report. Mostly it's gonna be email, email meeting. Right, and again, same thing with the Open Meetings Act. Um, you know, you can respond to me, not respond to all, but right, and just remember that, and then I will share it and hold things together.
You know, blind copy everybody out?
Blind.
That's what I used to do, so nobody could reply.
Nobody replied ever.
Blind copy everybody.
We'll do that. So the next piece, uh, for leaving the meeting, we have a special public comment for our committee, and so is there a member in the public and/or online that we need to hear from?
So I'm not a big, I'm sorry, I put on a meeting date, I just checked the county board. For some reason, this is September, ours line up the same date, so
That does happen.
Be here and then leave.
That's inherent.
Yeah.
So there's no members of the public in the audience. Is there anybody online that's a member of the public that has comment on TV work that we're gonna be undertaking on, to send the committee, the local government officials? There's no one. Okay, so, um, back, we can adjourn the meeting.
And I'm gonna just say, Elizabeth, with this discussion of, uh, you know, how you're gonna get information out and communication, and who knows what the future's in ten years, where we're gonna be with artificial intelligence. It seems to me that a tech focus in how government agencies can work more efficiently, work better between themselves, communicate with the public, share information. I mean, that might be an area that, um, really can expand and be innovative, um, so, and our insight and contribution to that, that could be helpful. All right, uh, can I have a motion, please, to, uh, adjourn your, the, the, the committee. Go ahead, go ahead.
If we're motioning out, we never ruled in.
We'll call, we didn't do that. Or you need to do a roll call for that, yeah. Good, thank you.
Because I rescind my motion.
It's all new to everybody. Okay, you ready? President Cook?
Yes.
Vice President, uh,
Yes.
Senator Prince?
Yes.
Senator Thomas? That's trustee Gaten.
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Ali Livingston?
Yep.
And Thomas Palmer?
Yes. Then, that's, that we, now we.
And now with the adjournment.
Go ahead, Pat. I moved every adjournment. I will second.
Senator Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Vice President. Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Judge Barrett.
Yes.
Trustee Gaetan.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
Elizabeth Kessler.
President, yes.
Lizzy Livingston. And Thomas Palmer.
Yes.
Tom and Elise, thank you very much for your.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Time this evening. Don't hesitate to bother any of us, especially Elizabeth. Alright, I'm gonna take the liberty of making a president's comment. I meant to do it earlier, I I really appreciated the general fund budget variance report that Andy put together. For the fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty three, which really was a summary of, I believe, the variances. You know, throughout that fiscal year and I found that very interesting and. You know, the comments, the explanatory comments were were clear and.
Just to give kudos to the manager who allowed the exact information for the variances, so they always factor for their own department budgets. And each quarter will be that that stat and. Yeah. The new manager plays the variance for the.
And as you set up for the budget, the coming budget. Maybe having that variance report in front of the board, so they can say, okay, last year. This this is the way it played out and it was positive or negative, whatever it might be. And then as they move into planning and as you all move into planning for the coming year. It gives us a quick check on, but what happened last year?
And typically I do the five. I don't usually do the variance, but I will give you the actual from twenty three, so you can see it for the budget from twenty three.
Yes.
And then, you know, so you have something to compare to, you look at the budget from the prior year, well, it's close, but what did we actually do, right?
Yes.
But you have so many columns, and then you gotta compare it down with what's in this point.
Right. Well, I think that's, I I that's helpful and I I think all that old lady sometimes goes unrecognized. So we need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to two C one personnel, the open meeting act. And two C two collective bargaining.
Before we do that, Christie, because we didn't take the motion to to do a roll call vote to go into the descending of committee, which we did. Now we went into that, we need a roll call back into the open meeting and do another roll.
Okay, but we're getting good at this.
It's just a new thing.
A little confusing back and back for everybody, but.
Doesn't take much to get.
Okay, so. Your motion to to commit into the regular meeting.
Make a motion to reconvene to the regular meeting.
Right, President Cook.
Yes.
Judge Barrett.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Senator Thomas.
Yeah.
Trustee Gaetan.
Yes.
Now, now you can. Trustee Gaetan.
Yes.
Senator Thomas.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Judge Barrett.
Yes.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
And we read this for two, two C one personnel, two C two collective bargaining. Alright, and then for those online, we're gonna be going to executive session, we will be coming back in the open section, there is. Potential action available before we adjourn tonight and then. Us listening on the other side.
Yeah. So I think our last bit of business is to.
Roll call. Reconvene.
Okay.
Trustee Gaetan.
Here.
Senator Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Assistant.
Judge Barrett.
Here.
Vice President Dom.
Here.
And Trustee Everard.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes. Okay, so we have reconvened and we've done the roll call. Turn our attention to twenty point one, the executive director annual merit increase. And we had a formal vote and recommended a two percent. Increase for the year beginning July one. And. I think we should vote on that now so that it's. Completed and then I've asked our attorney Andrew Payne to discuss. The board's decision with Elizabeth tomorrow and I'd be happy to follow up also with Elizabeth. Okay, so. Do we need a motion or is my comment sufficient to be a motion?
We need a motion in a second.
Spending money. But I make motion.
The annual.
Annual increase.
Yeah, there's a resolution to it. Resolution twenty three, twenty five.
Okay, so Chris is making the motion regarding the annual. Merit salary increase for the next fiscal year, Pat's seconding it, the number is two percent.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Judge Barrett.
Yes.
Trustee Gaetan.
Yes.
Senator Thomas, yes. President Cook.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes. And thank you all for your help. Now we get to adjourn. Alright, so. Who's gonna motion?
Hey. Senator Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Judge Barrett.
Yes.
Trustee Gaetan.
Yeah.
President Cook.
Yes.